Please.
Bergen.
Here.
Drankow.
Here.
Angus.
Here.
I'm sorry. McKenzie.
President.
Raffey.
Here. Chair.
President.
And Walstein is absent.
Walstein is on a recruiting trip for Wortburg. Welcome back to our guest councilperson. We'll check in with you towards the end of the meeting, see what you're feeling by then. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
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 Opposed? Approved. Next item is approval of the minutes of August 6, 2018, regular meeting minutes to entertain a motion.
I move approval of the August 6, 2018, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes approved. Time for public comments for items not on the agenda. Anyone here wish to speak?
It's up here, I imagine. Good evening, council and mayor. Matthew Schneider, Waverly resident, Ward 5. I just had some follow-up after the previous meeting that we had a week ago. So I think there was some good discussion in there, and I think Heidi hit the nail on the head when she said at public comment that at that previous meeting that we should open up discussion again. And we should be able to do that in a way that we're not being bullied or harassed. And so, in a way that we have no fear of reprisals. So, yes, I think the citizens need to and should have no fear of speaking out. We should also remember that citizens are at the top of the organizational flow chart, and that these are business meetings of the city. And this should be the place where data is exchanged freely between citizens and city leaders. And also, I do want to make an announcement that several months ago, citizens got together with the goal to begin to try to open up discussions with the citizens and city leaders, to have a safe public forum where exchanges of data and information and ideas can take place. You know, again, without fear of reprisal. So, we created the Waverly online town hall page where we've got, you know, I think about 250 members now. And this page is closed to the public. It is available for verified Waverly residents only. We have a comprehensive list of rules that are being moderated and policed by a four-person team of moderators. And we want facts. We want healthy exchange of information here. If there's any misstated facts by citizens or by leaders or anybody, we want the answers corrected. Being incorrect is not bad. And I got all kinds of scars from the number of times I've been incorrect and made mistakes. But when it goes unchecked and when it goes unverified with important information, especially with data and important things that we're talking about, you know, truth and facts are important. It's paramount. So, you know, existing members, I invite them to invite other citizens, and I encourage the new ones that come on to do the same. And so we can have a healthy exchange of ideas. And there's, you know, Cal, of course, and I think had a really great idea of a ward email. I think that's got some merit to it. And I got one more vacation story to tell you. This is a good story, too, but I couldn't, I didn't have time last time. So, we spent two days in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. And one of our first stops as soon as we got into town was the Safeway Grocery Store. And so we put our items on the belt, and the checkout person looked at, we left our kids at home. It was just Amy and I that went to the grocery store. And he looked up at us, and he said, "Welcome to Coeur d'Alene. How long are you guys here?" And I thought, hmm, how does he know that? How does he know that we're tourists? I mean, Idahoans and Iowans, they kind of blend, right? We don't look a whole lot different. And he says it was the type and size of the items that we were purchasing. And he's been a checker since 1984. And he learned how to welcome citizens to Coeur d'Alene through the items that they put up on the belt. And I thought, that's kind of cool, that he has that ability. I've never seen anybody do that. So, later through our visit, my son and I rode bicycles through the streets of Coeur d'Alene. And there was no road diets, and the streets were wide, and we felt safe. And I think part of this safety was the awareness and respect for other people that really, we could feel it through the entire town, and it was really quite contagious. We spent time in their parks and at their lakeside activities. And after being there a day and a half, I thought, I've got to get more answers. So I visited some retail stores. I talked to store managers. And what I found was really quite amazing, that the store managers that I talked to, they deeply cared about their customers, and they cared about their store. And they even cared about their city, which is kind of odd in the stores that I was going to. They normally are not involved in city. So I questioned this one store manager about this. And he says, "The city's always had a long-term planning that involved the citizens, and they were very open about where the city's always going, always seek input from the most important people, their own citizens." You know, and I think Waverly has the same magic as Coeur d'Alene. We just need to put it to work. And I think that, as I've said probably now three or four times, it just takes getting the right people in the right seats. So, just a story I wanted to share. And just one more request to council that we do pull out the WHKS study from 2016. If we can get that on a future study session, I think that would be wonderful. I've emailed my councilperson about a date on the implementation of the three-lane rollout. So, any answers that you can provide there would be great. I encourage everyone to go vacation in Coeur d'Alene, and let's bring that back to Waverly. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. Anyone else here with comment for something not on the agenda? We'll take what you had to say under advisement, Matt. Some good things there, and I may touch on a couple of those later on in the session. Next item on the agenda is this update from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a representative here that will do that honor?
Hello. Good evening. I guess I pulled the short straw or the long straw? I'm not entirely sure. Hank Bagelman, who is our chair, was unable to be here today. I am Kate Payne. I am the vice chair, I think is the title they give me. So, I got two reports that were handed to me. One came from the city staff, and one came from Hank. What I did was read them over, and I kind of synthesized the year into something a little bit simpler than either one. The one from the city was facts and figures, and the one from Hank was a little bit softer. And I'm going to try and group it, just not month by month, but by what we did, and to some extent, by month. So, it's my understanding that what you're expecting to hear is a summary of what happened over the course of this year. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was what I thought I was going to tell you tonight. I don't know what you're trying to find out from me, other than what we did. So, feel free to interrupt and shoot questions. I'll try and answer them. We had a busy year, I think. I haven't been on it for all that long, but it seemed like we did a lot of things this year. We met 12 times over the course of this term. We had quorums at all of those meetings. And Hank has quantified that as being a 70.4 percent attendance rate. Now, I don't know where that stands with other commissions, but it sounds pretty good. So, we started out the year in June of 2017, is the way that these things kind of show us, is our year is going from June through May. So we did various things. We worked on planned development district information, how to make planned development districts more palatable or desirable to developers. We worked on that over various meetings from May, June, July, and September of 2017. We looked at district boundary amendments in July and August. We had at least one, I think actually two, two-mile boundary applications. We looked at solar panel array applications for CUNA in August of 2017, Wortburg in September 2017, and for Waverly Utilities in January 2018. So there were three that came across our radar. We looked at, hi Bill, lot amendment issues for property on East Bremer Avenue in 2017. We looked at the Casey's application twice in November and again in February. We adjusted zoning language for neighborhood community districts twice over the course of the year. Actually, three times, November, December, and January. January was probably our busiest month. We had the longest agenda items. So we looked at right-of-ways language for Fourth Street Southwest and Tech Parkway, where they're doing that renovation of the, yeah, Marx, what's it called? I don't know what's going in there now. It's a...
The old Marx repair.
Yeah, the old Marx wrecker place. We did that in January. We looked at a couple of things at Centennial Oaks, a planned development density issue that wanted to put a single-family home on a particular lot. We looked at subdivision flats at Prairie Links Golf Course area. We looked at adjustments to allow the Waverly historic lofts to move forward. I think that had to do with parking adjacencies. We looked at some flood management amendment reviews in March of 2018. In April, we moved on to rezoning requests, public hearings for a property at 39th and Viola Drive Southeast. And then we started looking at some public hearings for, we had two meetings in April. So we met on April 2, and we met again on April 19. A lot of that was driven by those public hearings that had to do with some language that had to change to allow some rezoning things to adjust. So we looked at the Omni Lots in early April, and some minor subdivision reviews for Rolling Hills, 2nd Edition. April 19 was when we did a whole bunch of those public hearings that were about the language for the rezoning, the changes to the code for the language, for the revisions. I don't know how to say that more clearly right now. In May, we looked at a planned development amendment for Centennial Oaks. This is something we denied. And we reviewed condominium conversion standards in May. And that takes me to the end of the year. So we did a lot of various things. I'd like to say our meetings went as fast as I just summarized it for you, but they did not. And I think that that kind of sums it up. I think the vast majority, probably the most critical things, were some of those changes that we did for those public hearings for the properties, and the way that they had to be amended to accommodate changes to the code. And I know that many people on the commission struggled with the Casey's decision. But that kind of sums up the year.
Good. Is there any questions from the council?
Well, yeah, I would note some of the zoning language changes as we've been adjusting the R1s and the R... Some of that has been some significant adjustments that we've been trying to make to modernize it or make it more feasible for what we have. Are you, do you think there's going to be some more of that? I think that's kind of an ongoing thing to constantly look at.
I'm not aware of any more that are coming up. I thought we took care of it.
Probably not in the residential districts. There may be some commercial changes.
Commercial-type stuff.
I, go ahead, Bill.
We're letting Rachel get her feet wet for a little bit, so she can jump into that.
Just curious, with the rest of the Parkway being finished and coming out on the east side of town, have there been any conversations about just looking at how things are zoned east? You know, traditionally, that wasn't an area we thought we would see a lot of growth. But being an east side resident, I would hope that we would see some commercial and industrial development out there now that they've got a little bit easier way to get through and around town.
It hasn't come up as an agenda item, but it does seem like something that would be worth looking at.
You see a lot of yellow in that area, which there may be some pockets that could be looked at to spur development, that type of thing.
Some of those mixed-use areas are now going to be residential. And on that map, I think residential is yellow, on the east map.
A long drive from the east side to a lot of the convenience stores, those type of things, grocery stores.
Parkway will make that shorter.
Yes. It would be nice maybe to try to encourage a little pull that direction on development.
Do you have any major projects that are on the horizon, planning and zoning?
No, but usually once a year. I'm not sure what month it is. I feel like we have kind of a planning session to think about if there's anything that we need to take on as a, you know, a project for the year. This year, we, I don't think that we had any really significant special projects that were driven by the commission itself. But I imagine that'll come as an agenda item to have that kind of planning session to think about if there's anything that we as a group would want to address or that we hear from other people.
I was trying to think if Hank had indicated when the next comprehensive plan update. That minor one may be coming up shortly.
We did the one in '17 for the federal, or the land use plan. And the new one would come with, we'd like to do it at around the 2020s.
Are there any conversations going on with the county about the two-mile zone? And just to improve communication about that with the county?
No, I think, the notes that I had showed only one, that we had only had one application that kind of touched that. But I kind of, memory says that there were two, but I'm going to trust my notes rather than my memory. But there hasn't been any other conversation. And I don't know that with only one coming up, that it's a significant issue in our radar.
I was just thinking about development in general. I know that had come up at a few sessions I went to when I was on economic development about the, there isn't much organized communication, it doesn't sound like, between the...
Well, Rachel's been reaching out to new members over there. And so we're going to move forward on some of that, too.
I mean, I would, in giving this report, it occurs to me that we are fairly reactive rather than proactive sometimes, unless it comes from staff at the city. And I think that it would be smart of us to kind of come together as a group and try and see if there's anything proactive. I think that that would probably be something that we could have a conversation about.
So I'm guessing that the reactive part would be responding to requests for rezoning from whatever entities, and proactive would have more to do with planning. Do you find that the commission does a lot, puts a lot of energy into planning, or you spend most of your energy trying to deal with requests that people are ringing you?
Well, I'd say that from, it's probably split, to be honest. The proactive things, I think that crossed our court this year were probably the planned development language changes that we talked about early on, and some of the residential code language, or the residential zoning language, to try and clean that up and make it be tighter. I think it was last year, we spent some time revising the residential code to have the, the year goes really fast, to have the small resident, oh, R1 districts. So we did some proactive changes to the zoning designations. So that's proactive, but mostly coming from some issues that come up from the city staff people, not from the planning and zoning people specifically. So I kind of think that there's three tiers of things that come from the exterior, from external, from people in the community who want zoning changes, or some sort of request to change the zoning, to things that come from the staff at the city that are looking at things because they hear things that we as a commission don't hear. But then I think that there's probably an opportunity for the people on the commission to have a conversation about anything that they might want to bring to the table. And I think that that's where I think we could probably do something differently than we've been doing. I'm saying that totally off the cuff. That's just me. This has not been vetted with the group. They're hearing it for the first time tonight.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Kate, for your report, and we'll look forward to one approximately a year from now. And if some important things come up, I'm sure you'll let us know so that we can act on them.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I for one would like to thank anybody who serves on planning and zoning. I know our commissions are all important, but it strikes me that that one really consumes a lot of energy. And I just think they probably don't always get a lot of positive strokes sometimes. So I think we should probably show them some appreciation. It's doing a service for the city.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Next item is reports from boards and commissions. First one is the Premier Waverly Law Board minutes received into record. Library Board minute, Board of Trustee minutes from July 10, 2018, received into record. Airport Commission minutes, July 12, 2018, received into record. Leisure Services Commission minutes, July 19, 2018, received into record. Brings us to staff comments.
I don't believe we have any tonight, sir.
Okay, very good. City Council comments, council members?
Well, one of the things that we talked about at our Strategic Planning Commission was the need for open lines of communication. So, in the spirit of open lines of communication, after the city council meeting, I'm going to go to the Wooden Foot Saloon and have a beer. And I'm going to invite anyone who wants to come talk to me to join me. I'm not buying. I'll buy myself a beer. You have to buy your own beer. And I'm only going to stick around for one beer. I do actually have to work tomorrow. But I'm going to try to make a regular habit of after the city council meeting, going to the beer, going to a saloon, getting a beer. I'm walking. And I'm going to try to rotate through the Wooden Foot, the poorhouse and beach house. My apologies to Sasquatch Jacks and Joe's Nighthawk. I'm not walking that far. But I'm, so if anyone wants to join me, city council members are welcome to join me, so long as we don't reach quorum. Well, if we get too many people, someone's going to have to go to a different bar. But I just wanted to, you know, put out that invitation, anyone who wants to come and have a chat, you're more than welcome to.
Very good.
The other thing that came up at strategic planning was having meetings without beer. Which maybe no one will come to, I don't know. But I was charged with the task of creating town hall meetings that we could have. And ideas were thrown around at that meeting, such as maybe having the city council present quarterly for just listening sessions at the library. And so we'll be working on that in the next few months, but I don't think we'll be having spirits, so.
Other counsel?
Can we get any sort of construction update about what's happening out at 20th or downtown or...
Mike, would you like to?
You need to tune into Kway at 7:30 in the morning.
It's already working, sorry.
Okay. So, Bremer Avenue, you saw the rain did not hold them up. We had, I think, an inch, inch and a half of rain last night. But because the soil's sandy, and they have probably foot of sub-bass down, they started paving at about 9 o'clock this morning. So, I think they've got one more day of mainline paving, then that paver is going to head to the west end. And so hopefully, well, maybe by next week, they'll be paving over there in the west end of Bremer Avenue. There is a four-foot gap between the travel lanes and the parking, or the curb and gutter section. So that will be filled in, I think, by the end of the week. They usually get strength on the concrete within about 36 hours. So if they do the next pour, well, it's supposed to rain tomorrow, so it may not be until Wednesday. So it could possibly be by Friday that they're starting to look a lot like a street. They are scheduling to do the switch-over on the lanes on the east side downtown here the week of September 10. So, that will, for a benchmark, take place after the firemen's convention. Fifth Avenue Northwest is open. The railroad crossing work is done there. On 20th Street, if you were up there last Friday, you were kind of like, what's going on? Traffic control switched, and access from the north was closed, and then you had to come in from the south. That happened with very little to no notice to the city. At the point we did find out, we did send a notice out to our emergency responders, police, fire, ambulance, as well as the residents and adjacent property owners. Another notice went out this afternoon, saying that tomorrow morning, you will once again have to access to the north on 20th Street. They had to put a storm sewer crossing in just north of Knight Avenue. That work is now done. So they will switch back again and continue to do storm sewer, pavement removal and grading south of Knight Avenue. Parkway. The beams, bridge beams, they thought were going to be scheduled for this week. They have rescheduled for next week. They need drier conditions so that the ground is stable. These beams are very long, very, very big. As I've talked about on the radio, it's, the beams themselves are over 130 feet in length. You then put them on a transport with a truck unit for the back end, and then the tractor unit on the front end. And they're stretched out probably in the neighborhood of 175 feet long, which is more than half a football field. So, they have escorts with them. The back end is steerable, so they can navigate around the corners. They are going to start with the middle span across the river, which is span number three, and then come back west and do span two and span one. There are six spans, six beams per span, so that's 36 transports. So that will take them in the neighborhood of two to three weeks to set the beams once they get started. We plan on having drone video of this process, as well as a lot of photo documentation. It's not something that happens every day in Waverly. I've heard this is the longest bridge in Bremer County. So it's something that we want to certainly get some photo and video documentation on the process.
Where are the beams originating from?
Omaha.
Thanks.
Just another question, Mike. The sewer, storm sewer work at 2nd Avenue and Cedar Lane will not start next week, hopefully.
It's, the soonest it would start would be Monday, September 10.
After the convention?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments?
Well, I had a couple questions, and I don't know if I'm stepping on you with this or not.
No, go ahead.
One was kind of on the question of when, approximately when do we think that they're going to do the lane changes in terms of the striping? Are they going to do any of the parts that are already done of West Bremer out to Heritage Way?
I think the intent is that when the west end that they're working on right... I think the intent is that when the west end that they're working on right now, when that's paved curb to curb, they're going to look at doing the pavement markings and opening that section of roadway up, but still have like the parking lanes closed as they're doing the sidewalk, the side streets, and all the backfill and restoration work. I believe they intend to permanently stripe it as the three lane before they open it to traffic. I believe at that time, they may also look at doing sections west and east of that.
It's on the west, that's talking just the west side.
West side, right. In regards to the east side, it would be at the point that they, again, have it paved curb to curb.
And then, I had a question, as far as the WHKS study had recommended, looking at some of the turn signals and lights, and, I know we had had that in the resolution, we pulled that out, was kind of a timeline for looking at those to try to address some of the issues that even that study had said would come up?
One thing I'd like to kind of correct here, because this keeps being called the WHKS study, the DOT, it's the DOT's study, and they commissioned WHKS to basically do a lot of the heavy lifting on it. The DOT reviews it and signs off on it. So this is the DOT's traffic study that was commissioned and prepared by WHKS, and reviewed and approved by the DOT. In regards to some of the things that I think have come up in discussion are, well, this intersection may be a concern in 20 years, but a lot happens between now and that. In regards to what are concerns around town, Waverly continues to be a steadily growing community, and we are looking at, at scheduling the city's traffic study for early in 2020 because we want this construction work to be done, Bremer Avenue, Cedar River Parkway, want all that work to be done, but we also want to get the traffic data collected before the next round of construction projects starts, such as the reconstruction of Fourth Street Southwest. So our window of opportunity for data collection is probably April of 2020.
But just to clarify, once it's opened up, the lights will be timed for a center turn lane configuration. They will not stay the same timing as they are now in a four lane configuration.
They, they will be restored to the original four lane timing cycle before the construction began on Bremer Avenue.
That is different than what I've been led to believe. Part of the going to the center turn lane, if I understood, took one movement out of that process. I assume the lights were going to be timed for that, so that more vehicles could make it through the intersection during their green light. That's not happening?
I'm not sure where that came from.
Are there any more cars turning left?
I think what we're looking at is, instead of having a green light on each of the four directions, you would have traffic able to go at the same time with the protected turn lanes, which we did not have.
To my knowledge, no, we're not doing the protected turn lanes. There's an opportunity for that.
And we're going to have to talk to the DOT about that. I think that was the intent the entire time, it's still allowing it to happen.
That was my understanding.
Which intersection are we talking about?
All of them.
Okay.
I'll talk to the DOT, I'll talk to Dave Little and see what we have for that.
I mean, I was led to believe that all left turns would be simultaneous, which would help with throughput through the intersections as long, as well as longer green lights going east and west to clear any backups. If we're not re-timing the lights to work on a three lane configuration, I guess I'm a little confused.
I'll get clarification on that.
I mean, I don't think that there's much change that needs to happen at most of the lights. I mean, there's some concern at the Fourth Street West intersection, but that has a protected left turn. But a lot of the signals, we would have, if we wanted a protected left turn, we'd have to change the signals because they don't have a built-in light for that. And I wasn't of the impression that we were kind of buying new stoplights. But I, yeah, I mean, I do think there are some areas that we were talking about adjusting the timing specifically at 15th and 16th on the west side, but that's kind of the question of when that kind of re-timing is going to happen.
I guess, I don't envision new lights needing to be purchased because you already have a signal head for the inside lane going both directions, so you just slide that over for the center lane and...
Be a matter of changing the glass on the green, so. Yeah, I was suddenly the impression that it would be a dedicated left turn lane and dedicated signal.
It is a dedicated left turn lane, but it's not a protected, the only ones that'd be protected are like we have today at Fourth Street West and First Street West as you're turning north. The, the three-phase timing that we have on First Street East is going, the arrows are going to be removed and it's going to be restored to the normal traffic signal operation that is, is pre-construction.
I think it warrants a discussion with the DOT.
Well, and the other intersection that I think bears attention is the 10th Avenue and Fourth Street Southwest, where, you know, the cases is going in. I know that there is a left turn lane, but there's not currently a protected left turn arrow, but there has been some talk about changing the timing there so that we do have a protected left turn arrow. What, is there any timeframe for that happening?
This fall.
This fall?
That, that, that will happen as, literally as, we now have tentative approval from the DOT, we have submitted the application for modifications to the traffic signal, and the initial effort is, is just on the north and southbound lanes to make those protected left turn movements. Right now, they're permissive, and we would go to a protected setting.
We have, we need Iowa DOT's approval because that's 218 business route?
No, it's Iowa Highway 116.
Highway 116. Didn't know about that one. That's a new number for me.
It's a secret.
Yeah, it's a secret.
Any other council comments, discussion? Anne, this is your last meeting, do you have some words of advice or wisdom to us?
Thanks for having me. Council meetings are not foreign to me, especially in the fall. My husband is a Monday Night Football fanatic. I am not, so I actually watch the meetings on Monday nights just to avoid football. So I do watch, and I know Brian watches football, too, so that's great that you're going to give it up to hang with people and...
My wife watches more football than I do.
Okay, and we've got catch-up, so. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. I have something I'd like to impart, and I'm not exactly certain how, how to phrase it. I could use language, but some language, but it would not be appropriate for, for broadcast and for the public. But looking back and forward, at the present time, I was put in this chair to heal or bring this community back together. With the council I have working, a lot of that, or most of that, has been accomplished. But there is a group out in the public that's making it harder and harder to realize some of that. Maybe what I, what I'm going to say is, is merely going to throw another log on the fire, but social media is great, one choose right. But there's been a segment of the population that seems to feel that it's their duty to attack, so to speak, the members of the council, city staff, and the mayor, and it's not appreciated by any means. I'm not sure what the motive to do it is, you know, obviously, the three lane, four lane controversy stirred some things up, rightfully so. But the decision was made, and just because there's a certain segment of people that are afraid of change, they feel the need to rip everyone apart that has anything to do with that decision. Change is inevitable, it was going to happen, and at this point, my position, regardless of how I felt about the decision and, and the whole discussion, the decision was made, and I upheld it. The first week after that was absolutely brutal. And, but there's no way that this council, this city administration, or anyone else is going to satisfy 100% of the people. It's your right to be vocal if you'd like to, but the personal attacks on people associated with the city government in any way, shape, or form, or anyone else out there that you happen to dislike, really needs to cease. And Matt touched on it a little bit, and I've heard the comment before, that Corey Lane seemed to be a welcoming committee, or a community. We pride ourselves on being aggressive and up to date, but I've heard the comment before that we may not be that welcoming community. I have a little article coming out, Eric has it in his office, the newspaper, in regards to the fireman's convention. And I would certainly hope that the citizens of Waverly will welcome those firemen with open arms. You may not like some of the things that you think they bring to the community, but they're here to have fun, they're here to have a convention, and just maybe, if we, they're treated right, they'll feel fit, the need to visit Waverly again on some of their travels, and patronize their merchants, or merchants, or retail, whatever it might be. And some of them may even feel that Waverly would make a good home for them and their, and their families. We have all kinds of opportunities here for recreation, for jobs, for housing, whatever facet of the community that you want to, that you think you need, but let's open our arms and welcome them. Starting Friday noon, registration is open, and you'll see some campers coming in, you'll see some golf carts roaming the streets, and, but September 1st is the Fireman's Association's Appreciation Night at the campground for the community. There'll be a band there, there'll be beverages of all kinds, so, again, and I know that a lot of them are looking forward to visiting with the residents in that addition out there. Fresh rolls in the morning, and maybe a pie in the evening or something like that, I don't know, but somehow we've got to, we have to change some attitudes and bring this community back under wing in the healing process. That's all I have to say. Entertaining motion for adjournment.
Motion we adjourn?
Second.
Motion being seconded, everybody in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Most of you are adjourned.